Please stand for flag.
Our flag is, we do apply to United States of America to the Republic from which it stands, illumination under God in this world.
Okay. Not in here, go on in here. Dan Wilson?
Here.
David Allen, Anderson. Jeff Meyer and Tiffany Baller. Okay, we have review and approve in 9:47 and 10:45 regular meeting minutes. And like I said, September, don't want anything out of it. You got, I got one. Can you follow it up over one?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Okay. No. I made the motion, made a check, make a second. All there?
Aye.
Any names? Okay, let's go down through here. Uh, Linda Steves?
I don't think they've heard from APA yet. Usually I get some kind of notice from them, but I haven't, so.
Ken Whitney? Uh, Dennis McElroy?
Yeah. Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm Dennis McElroy here with Chris Grandle, the owner and applicant of a property on Buttermilk Falls Road. Where Chris is proposing a two-acre subdivision on that parcel. It is the property that five years ago, I think was before you, had received site plan approval for his operation of his business, his shop and yard. On that property was a single-family residence, is a single-family residence, I should say. And this proposal is just to subdivide a two-acre lot out of the primary parcel and leave that as a separate individual lot. So what you have in the plans is a survey of the two-acre parcel, a portion of the 37-acre parcel that is, comes from, and then another sheet, plan sheet, that is our original site plan sheet, or overall sheet, from the prior plan set that we did before this board five years ago. The existing conditions, that shows the totality of the acreage that Chris owns, 60 acres in total, made up of two parcels. Now, of that primary parcel that has the frontage on Buttermilk Falls Road, that's where the two-acre parcel is coming from. And that's depicted on the survey, the Randy Barton survey, the other sheet that you have as part of the application. Again, it's an existing house, the only thing that changes here now will be another line on the plan.
So the, where's the log cabin, that's the part that's there still?
That's, that is correct.
Right, and there's a drive?
Yep.
That's on that site shed. So that's the part you're taking then? From, you're taking that from?
From the 37-acre other parcel that includes his shop, couple buildings up above?
Above this separation.
That's correct, yeah. That's correct.
Is that, what's the drilled well here that you have, is that your shop?
This drilled well, Chris, is what he's asking about, the one down at the lower level.
Yeah, originally when they did that log cabin, they drilled several wells till they finally got a good one.
Oh, okay.
That's just one of the, there's.
That's one of them?
There's like four wells on that property that are there.
There is frontage, yeah, and the driveway that serves both properties is split by this, the subdivision line splits it so that it'd be a right of ingress, ingress and egress over both properties.
It's not like I'm subdividing, I have to do something with it. It's my sister, my sister's getting older, I agreed to sell her the house so she's cutting nearby and so on and so forth. It's, it's not going out of the family basis, it's just.
But as we discussed last month, a sister doesn't qualify as a family subdivision.
Yep. Entry here, existing entry?
Yes.
For both?
Yes.
For this and this?
Yep.
Right, is that correct?
Single drive in off Buttermilk Falls Road.
For both?
Correct.
Yeah, nothing would change.
Enough land to make land, is that 3.2 or is that two acres there? I don't know where it is.
Yeah, I don't know what this.
What's the D and O, the acreage?
Well, I say the land use classification is rural, but we've got 60 acres.
No, no, but I mean, the subdivision, I'm not quite sure on this, it might be 3.2 acres is the minimum?
It doesn't become the minimum, it becomes a density issue. If you had 60 acres in total, you could have a total of roughly seven lots, seven individual lots. There could be six one-acre lots and the rest would be that, I think Jeff probably understands that and knows that from APA.
It's more of a general guideline.
Oh, okay, I just give one acre.
It's, it's an overall density, it's not specific.
It's not specific.
Like most townzoning is, where it's a lot size, so. So we're fine in terms of APA, there is an APA subdivision, minor subdivision process that we're going through, but.
My next question, you haven't got anything back yet from them?
No, no. If, part of the submittals to them is, aside from the form that you signed last week, which I apologize, I'm gonna ask you to sign again, because for some reason I'm not finding it right away, but, because I think you gave it back to me, right Jeff, there was a question of whether, yeah, you had to send it in or I did, and I think I misplace it. But also, record of the resolution, I don't know how quickly that gets turned around. The resolution, not necessarily the meeting minutes, but the record of the resolution of approval needs to be one of the things that I submit with the APA documentation. Do you happen to know that by chance, does it, do the resolutions that get passed here of approval get sent to the applicants in any, or is it, or do you simply rely on the meaning of minutes of approval?
My understanding is the board relies on the minutes.
Okay.
You guys got any questions or?
Uh, just one, are we gonna need verbiage in the deed to the entrance?
Yes.
Even though it's short?
The deed or the map itself could have a note that just says, you know, the shared entrance between lots one and two for ingress and egress, something, just so, if it's on the map, it makes it easier, the deed is the kind of belt and suspenders.
Right now it's a sister, but that's what I mean.
Everything does change.
Right, so we can add a note on to Randy Barton's survey plan that ultimately gets signed by the chairman?
Right.
So we would come back with a mile R that would have that type of land down at Satisack Street to.
Also the maintenance on the road, I know it's your sister and now it's not a big deal, but.
Sure.
And it's short, I mean, maybe you wanna put something, I mean, things change and there's somebody you sell and then I'm not responsible for the load and.
Might better.
I think we should put some kind of verbiage in there, who maintains that short drive rate? I mean, it doesn't matter which parcel.
Like enough 90 feet, quarter to scale.
Yeah, about that. Any more? Call anyone open a public hearing? Make a motion to open a public hearing for this project? Second? All the favor? Okay, now, just, you're gonna have to, I don't know if everybody heard it out there, if you have to explain everything to the public now? Behind you?
Yes, we'll do. Okay, this project is a proposal to subdivide, because it's two parcels that Chris owns, it's 37-acre parcel into a 35-acre and two-acre parcel. The two-acre parcel will surround the existing single-family residence on the property. This will enable him to sell the property to his sister for residential use.
Any questions from public? Any motion to close? Public hearing? All the favor?
Aye.
All right, going through the short environmental assessment form. Will proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Will proposed action result in changing use or intensive use of land?
Nope.
Will proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
Nope.
Will proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
Nope.
Will proposed action result in adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walking?
Nope.
Will proposed action cause an increase in use of energy that fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
Nope.
Will proposed action impact public or private water?
No.
Waste water?
No.
Will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic or archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
Nope.
Will proposed action result in adverse change in natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, fauna?
Nope.
Will proposed action result in increase in potential for erosion, flooding or drainage?
Nope.
Will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No. Make a motion for negative declaration?
Second?
All there?
Aye.
Any names? Okay. Okay. Decision of the application, you've got a motion to approve the application with the stipulations that this could be on the mile R about driveway sharing and maintenance. What was the other stipulation here?
Copy of the APA.
Copy of the APA.
Second?
All there?
Aye.
Any names? Okay. We just have to have the APA cool. We get that. You're any else, you're all set? Except for my one.
Okay, could I, again, then indulge me to?
Do you have the form of form?
Again. Just, you broke my power going on Friday. It was in such shape.
She moved in there, was that?
Yeah.
She's already in there.
Yeah, she's in there now. I think that the last well that they did years ago, this was back when John Gird owned it, I think the last one was 200 feet. The first couple that they did were pretty dry wells, you know, so they kinda went around the property and they.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
What does Paul mean?
I'm Brian Nelson, we have heating on propane, I'm here with Stacy Silver.
Did you pump your fuel today? I'm not bringing care with my wire in my bag. So we sit here, there's sand, there's open air.
Basically what we're trying to do, Bruce Mallory owns a piece of property that we've been talking about for a few years, and we would like to put a couple of storage tanks on it. The location that I'm in now, there's no realistic way that I could put tanks there because the setbacks don't meet. And he had already, was already in negotiations with another company and he put leased a tank location for them. So Stacy knows everything about the, the actual storage facility.
So where is it?
There's a seven-acre lot.
Across the road from you?
Across the road from his. And he agreed to sell us the whole thing.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Stacy, I work for Health Propane Systems, and we install propane systems, large tanks, 30, 90,000 gallon tanks from the Carolinas basically up to Canada. Our owner is greatly involved in all of our work, we're well-known in the industry, we make sure, we have an engineering team now, and the plans in front of you have been sealed by our engineer. We strive to make sure that we meet every local requirement along with NFPA 58 requirements, be happy to talk to you about some of the emergency stops and so forth that we have on the system. You'll notice that on the drawings that we have the 50-foot setback from the property lines, there is crash protection around and fencing where's required. I'm happy to answer any questions, or maybe you're already experts with it, I know there is another tank nearby here and you're.
I don't know about that. You're not, you're not putting the fence all the way around?
Correct, the fence will be around all the piping that comes out of the tanks so that it is protected from any kind of personnel getting into it, yes.
And the rest of it is, is that what it is or?
What we have here is we're showing concrete barriers, they are defined on the one sheet, but they're basically the Jersey wall barriers that you would use around to protect from vehicles.
How hard?
These are shown as two foot 10, but you could certainly, yes, we could do three foot ones, yep.
Are there gonna be lighting?
There's usually lighting on the trucks, but maybe.
Yeah, there definitely be lighting, yes.
You will have lighting?
Yeah. As, as well as, we'll have cameras there too.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
What are you gonna use, LED lighting and all that?
Yeah, mostly, I've gotten proposals for, because we need three-phase power for one of the poles, so I have an electrician that has included a couple of poles for lights and, you know, and security.
So they're gonna use in this at, at the hours, you're gonna have, like all kinds of hours or?
No, basically it would be something that we used, I don't know that anybody really starts before seven in the morning, but a lot of times we'll load somewhere between seven and nine, and our guys are usually done by, you know, six in the afternoon.
Seven and nine, one load?
No, yes, between seven and nine we usually load. They might come back during the day once to load, but.
Okay, but it's time to go beyond, like past dark or something like that?
No, no, generally, well, it gets dark at 4:30 this time of year, so we could be loading, you know, up until 5:00, 5:30, something like that at night.
Okay. Not gonna be a lot of trucks or a lot of traffic?
No, no. And right now, right now we load, you know, with, with our oil business, we load back out of one other location. And right now, our propane, you know, we load one truck a day, basically. Sometimes a truck and a half.
And you gotta, you don't have, did you have an approval from state for road entrance?
I haven't done anything as far as a road entrance, I don't believe.
How's it coming?
Well, it's the main road that goes up to a really, really rapid, I guess.
Is it a private road? That's what you're saying.
Yeah, I think it is.
Is this just gonna be a loading facility, or you're gonna store like LP tanks or any of that stuff?
No, the LP tanks are stored. No, I have a cage.
I didn't know if you're gonna have like another yard remains or whatever.
These tanks are set up to be unloaded by tractor trailers.
Right, I know, yeah, but I didn't know if it's, the 100 pound, you know, like over an American, it's a hundred yard, not only your last big tank. They have their 100-pounders. Where the guys come in with their trucks and look up and do their things.
We really don't have any spare tanks. They're all in use, so.
Okay. I was on the wrong way. I was on the wrong side of the road. That don't work.
Yeah, as you, as you drive in, it's the right-hand side?
Yep. Yep. Any advices from there?
I have an agreement with Bruce pending approval to purchase the whole seven acres here. And, and you probably don't need to know, the reason, the reason I want to put the storage there is a couple reasons, is we don't, you know, we've gotten into the propane business for five years now, six years, and as of right now, I have to purchase that propane from somebody else. And not only does it cost me a lot more to do that, but I have no security. You know, I don't, I don't have my own place, so if they decide to sell it to somebody else, I could be out of luck as far as buying propane. So it gives me, gives me the security of a location where I know that I can put my fuel in and load it into my trucks and deliver it to homes.
Can you repeat the address again for the camera?
I don't know if we actually have the address.
I have state route 149, near airport.
There's probably a lot number, but I don't know that there's an address.
They don't get a 911 until it's established.
You're gonna do both things at once?
I'd like to, yes. And, and again, it's, it's, it's cheaper to do them both at the same time, by quite a bit, and it also gives, allows me to purchase more fuel in the summertime because they have this thing called allocation.
Yeah, because then you've got your own built-in place. Exactly. And your customers, you can kinda.
So it's, for us, it makes a lot of sense. It's just, you know, as a small business, and we've been in business for 30 years, it makes sense to get a location like this and, you know, kinda move forward.
Any questions? Can I make a motion to set the public hearing for a moment? Okay. I'll make the motion to set the public hearing for next work on the propane project.
Second?
All there?
Aye.
Any names? Okay.
Don't forget it's at 6:00.
Yeah, 6 o'clock.
Maybe it'll be at 6 o'clock. We start to switch. 24th is January.
There's five Mondays, don't get tricked. This one's the fourth.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no idea, what should I make a difference? Anyone else?
Yes.
I just come to try to get some information on looking at a building in your old car house, looking to possibly use that as a prison hall. I do a lot of law practice, I don't have any visibility, if somebody mentioned that it might be up for sale, then I figure it's common, fuck you guys, see what's involved.
Absolutely nothing because the town, the board here has no jurisdiction, the village, and that's.
I'm talking about this one over here, right?
Yeah.
That's the village, and it's, my understanding that the village has no rules, correct Jeff?
I have no idea.
You better contact the village, but that's entirely up to the village. I think it's Russ Blair is the mayor, I believe, is the mayor?
That's the village, okay.
It's a village, so that negates everything with the plan.
Yeah, I figure before I start going into it, get some more details, I think it might have environmental issues, everything I don't know, you know.
I hate the role of the old village. The last time I knew, the village had no real rules, but that's, we don't, they give, I don't know. Yeah, exactly, the village was so, actually very easy to do through the village, so just check with the village, the mayor.
Have a good night.
Nothing? Nothing, no, it's just been signing building permits and such. Okay, let's go. Make a motion to adjourn.
Should we approach the town board on seeing if they want to run an ad for more applicants for the board again? I know that they're pounding the door down.
I know that they're pounding the door down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the town board? Yeah.
Nice.
Nice.
We have five, well.
Well, do we? We have a whole three of us today.
Great possibility it's only going to be four. We can do the good one.
The town board has the ability to appoint alternates. In the past, when a board member has missed a number of meetings, the town board does have the authority to take action and remove that member.
Right, it used to be three meetings without others.
It's three in a calendar year is, the three unexcused absences in a calendar year is grounds for removal. Whether the town board is aware or takes that action, I don't know. It's up to them. But we got to have a letter to go to if you want to put them on notice to say that Mr. Allen has missed more than three meetings in the last calendar year. You want to do that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, I will.
But our secretary too, we don't tell the board about that?
I don't know, let the one stuck in time. And also, when we talk, she gets appointed, the organizational meeting, so if there are concerns.
I think there's concerns.
Concerns, is she, I don't, I'm going to say she's missed at least four or five meetings, the same as, same as Alan. But hers are always, she always, one, I think one was that she was really, was. I can't say she's not sick when she calls in, but every time she calls, it's a sickness, it always happens to be that morning. So, I don't know, there's not really much they can do about that, about somebody coming in sick.
Yeah.
Well, I know, it just puts us such a hardship on us.
Right.
And we're not getting our packets until Monday, before our package mail goes through. When she wants to, she's like, dude, they've done a good job. What?
I got some of the stuff too.
Yeah, I get, I answer a lot of phone calls.
She doesn't return?
A lot of times, we answer the calls because these people are looking for answers now and not later.
Well, you have people call up and they get a message and then you wait, what, three days, five days?
No, people wait that long.
No, we don't, we don't wait long.
Can you still call back? Oh, that's.
Yeah, they're calling us because she's not calling back.
It's like this lady from Pennsylvania here.
Stacy.
I talked to her twice.
Yeah, me, I've talked to her probably four or five times. And I know Bart's talked to her four or five times too.
Well, I don't know, what do you want to do with that?
I would, you know.
You got to have, you got to have those secretaries. I'm just going to tell you that ahead of time. Well, no, I don't say, you know, maybe we make a report or talk to her and say, look, we've got to show up or do something here. I mean, we got her packets the last two times on time. Because I told her both times, we'll once, get them out, make sure we're going to have them Friday, Saturday, not Monday. And she did, and I don't want to keep doing that every time I trip around. Yeah, but we shouldn't be. Shouldn't, we shouldn't end up doing that. Do your job, you know. Maybe let the town board, now when they can. Let them decide or let them. They go to what they're planning. Yep, okay, that's it, one that. Actually? Or is it January 1st? Or 3rd? 3rd, 3rd. It's that Monday. Next public?
No, I don't think it's, let me, let me look at my calendar, I thought it was.
That's not the way to be. Or if it's a regular board meeting, it would be the 10th, not the 3rd. Usually they do it on the 1st, you usually have easy bunches.
Organization, is that what they're doing?
Yeah. Okay, so, all right. Let me go to the supervisor, you know, have a call here with questions, okay? I told him this before, okay, and he, then he asked me, he said, one thing he said to me, what are you going to do if you don't have a secretary? He said, I will make sure you have one first. Well, I don't know how we're going to do that. Well, he said Jeff wouldn't fill in, he said. You know? I reached for secretary, it was far different. Well, he said to me, well, I do too, he said, I don't think so. Hey, man. Any else?
No sir.
No sir.
Oh, she know adjourned?
So, we're going to have, we're going to put that in the paper for the board meeting, we're going to do it if they just miss it or even more. Yeah, I mean, the board is set up to have up to two alternates, so regardless of one or two, get more people involved. All right, all right, so when I was, I came on board 100 years ago. I should mind it was alternate, I appreciate you. I, I came in and the, 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 Tony, Tony said, don't say anything, leave your show. Whatever.
Chad and I were the day.
That's Mr. Bonneville. Yes, that's true. That was the board. Oh, it's an alternate? It was 72. Yeah, he's not saying. Only if you're put in as a voting member, you get to. Okay, we've got to close up speaking.
Long term adjourn.
Is that good? Okay. Good, gone, we're done. Okay. And we shut this off.